Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this June 20 regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Thank you all for being here. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Berman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Oh, sir, I won't. No disrespect. I would like to do something different this evening with the mayor's permission.
All right.
Folks, please sit down. It's appreciated. Now, every couple of weeks, the mayor has honored me and asked me to read you all these Pledge of Allegiance. But how many of you consider what you are actually saying when we go through these words? Let me review them with you. Now, the word "I," it's a pronoun. And it means "me," standing here. Not God has made God William Berman, United States Table, deserve a title, but just "me," an old man. And it means you, Justin, not Chief Justin Street of the Zion Fire Rescue Department, but just you, Justin, an individual. And it means you too, Billy, not Billy McKeney, star basketball player and mayor of the city of Zion, but just you, an individual. Fledge. Now, folks, a pledge is a promise. We're giving our word. You know, when this country was first founded, we didn't have wires and shorty bonds and contracts. People just gave their word. If it was something serious, they'd shake hands on it. But if they wrote that word, they had taught them to, they might just as well be in town because nobody else would have anything to do with it. Lot of people wouldn't be talking anymore. Allegiance is a big, long word. And it means faithful. See, on my Marine Corps, when I was in fifty years ago, its motto was "Simple and Honest." Always faithful. And that's what allegiance is. To the flag. Now, the flag up there, you can take time sometime and go up and look at it. In one sense, it's just pieces, some pieces of cloth that sew on the other in a pattern. But in another sense, it's a symbol of this country. For instance, the stripes, thirteen of them, one for each and every state of the original thirteen states. The red stripes represented the blood of those patriots who fought and died for that flag. The white stripes represented the hopes and thoughts of the founders of this country. And the stars on the flag, fifty of them. You know, when this country first started, people didn't talk about Illinois and Wisconsin and Indiana. They thought that the Pacific Ocean was just over the next hill or just beyond the next mountain. But you know, the legend is that Betsy Ross made the first flag. And according to the story, some of the representatives from each of the colonies came to her, and they wanted the symbol of their colonies solely on that flag, and they wanted to be first and biggest. And that's who thought. She couldn't do that. So instead, she cut off thirteen stars, spelled it in a circle. And she told the representatives, she told them, "Your star is number one in that circle. It's the first star." But we all know where the circle is, don't we, down in Illinois? But it calms things down. To the union. Now, union is joining together as one. We're not a bunch of kinky little city-states like Casobal or Little Wayne here or something like that. We are joined together. We are one. And to the republic. Now, you know, there's a lot of different types of governments in the world. There are dictatorships. And a dictatorship is one foe that's just a little nearer than all the other foes in the world. You don't want to turn your back on anybody in a situation like that. And there are theocracies. Now, theocracies, where a bunch of usually old men, they get together, they're all, and they come out after about an hour, say, "You know, we waited for God to come down and tell us what he wanted us to do, but he wasn't home. Maybe he's out on the golf course or shopping. But if he hadn't been home, we think this is what he might have told us to do, so this is what we're going to do." And there are kingdoms. Now, last month, we all got to watch Charles get crowned, and in a kingdom, you just kind of inherit the job. That's the only way to get it. But we live in a republic. And in a republic, we elect people to represent us. Because since we have our city council here, we elect them to do what is best for the city of Zion. We have the governor and the state assembly down in Springfield to do what is best for all of us in the state of Illinois. We have the president and the congress to do what is best for the country. One nation. Now, a nation is more than a country. It is a very great country, and we are the greatest country in the world. Don't let anybody try to tell you anything different. We are the greatest. For which it stands, under God, folks, what can be divided in that? Indivisible. And that's another big word. It means we cannot be broken apart. You know, about a hundred and sixty years ago or so, this country fought a great turn of war. We now call it a civil war, but no war is civil when brother hates brother, neighbor tries to kill neighbor. We decide if this country will become the Confederate States of America, perhaps the New England States of America, maybe the Western States of America. But the war ended, and we stayed together. With liberty. Now, liberty means freedom. You're free to go, you're free to go your way. I'm free to go my way. But you know, folks, well, a lot of us sometimes forget this. My freedom stops right before you, before it starts. And your freedom stops right before my freedom starts. And justice. Now, justice means fair and equal treatment. It doesn't mean, sure, that you should get a special pass because you're the same clerk. And it doesn't mean Director Roberts, that you get something special because you're Director of Streets and Sanitation. We're all treated equal, for all, for each and every one of us. But folks, that's been too much of your time. The nice thing, we're here together on the eighteenth of July, when you stand up to as individuals to give your loyalty to that piece of cloth up there, the symbol of this country, that fifty states are joined together as one, and to the type of government that we have, a government that cannot be broken apart, under God, with freedom for each and every one of us, and equal treatment. Just remember what we're saying. Your honor, thank you for your time and courtesy. May the folks' permission to stand down.
Commission Grant. Mr. Berman, if I might say, I remember you giving that talk several years ago, and each time I say the Pledge of Allegiance, I think about it. You made us say it all very slowly so that we could capture each and every word.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So at this point, can we all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, Pastor Carl Williams from the City of Hope is going to lead us in prayer. We keep running into each other everywhere, Pastor Williams. We were just at the Lake County Festival for the...
June 10th.
June 10th celebration yesterday.
All right. I just want to say thank you all for serving our community, the people. Thank you very much. I wanted to start my simple prayer by reading from the servant of God, who calls, he's called James, the servant of God. Consider it pure joy, my brothers and sisters, whenever you face trials of many kinds, because you know that the testing of your faith produces perseverance. Let perseverance finish its work so that you may be mature and complete, not lacking in anything. If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you. But when you ask, you must believe and not doubt, because the one who doubts is like a wave of the sea, blown and tossed by the wind. That person should not expect to receive anything from the Lord. Such a person is double-minded and unstable in all that they do. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the servants here. Thank you for the people here. We know that in this city, there are broken parts, and there are various trials that people are going through. The mental trials, the physical trials, and the spiritual trials. Lord, we need your help to get through them. And we also consider them as tests to help us to grow and to mature and to be more enduring and persevering than ever before. But we cannot do it alone. We must have your wisdom. I know that this is a biblical exhortation in a way of considering all these things and various trials that we go through to help us mature in our faith and also persevere all that we go through. Or we need the wisdom to get through that. And so that's my prayer. I do pray for our servants, that you would give them wisdom beyond themselves so they know, they know what is right, and they know what needs to be done for the city and for the people and for this government. Lord, thank you for them. Bless them, keep them healthy, keep them strong, help them continue to have a passion for the people. Lord, we do appreciate them. They're here because they want to be here, and we need them. So please help them, give them wisdom. And also for us as a people, may we support them and give them what they need, what the encouragement they need, and also the backing and support when they call us out, or may we, may we go to it and get things done for the city and for us as a people. In Jesus' name I plead.
Thank you, Pastor Williams.
You're welcome.
Item number four. Are there any agenda changes?
I'd like to propose to strike items nine G and nine H.
Is there a motion? We have a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Fisher. Madam Clerk, any questions from our commissioners as to why we're doing this?
I'll pose that question.
So I had raised some concerns about the reduction of the property size and not having the plans to see what property would go there. I had some concerns about the general characteristic of the neighborhood, as well as the layout for driveways and garages and setbacks. So we're going to postpone.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number five is citizens' comments. We have Diane and Bill Quinn here from Harbor Ridge, living in Harbor Ridge in Zion.
I'll make what our names in case there were questions about our items on each other.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Citizens' comments going once, twice, three times? All right. So item number six, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on June 6, 2023 at 7:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip.
Bills, vouchers 143491 through 143606, loan on Huntington National Bank, total $577,047.3.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item seven, consider passing resolutions as follows. 7A supplemental resolution improvement under Illinois Highway Code, rebuild Illinois Bond Fund for the 2020 Road Program per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. For the purposes with record keeping and housekeeping, the attached supplementary resolution required by IDOT for utilization of the rebuild Illinois Bond Fund. The funds were utilized for the 2020 Road Program. Staff request and recommend approving the IDOT resolution for expenditure of $276,304 from the rebuild Illinois Bond Fund. Funding for this project was a budgeted item within the fiscal year 2020.
Is there a motion to approve the supplemental resolution improvement under Illinois Highway Code?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number seven B, supplemental resolution improvement under Illinois Highway Code, rebuild Illinois Bond Funds for the 2021 Road Program per Director Roberts.
Thank you again, sir. For purposes with record keeping, the attached supplementary resolution required by IDOT for utilization of the rebuild Illinois Bond Fund. The funds were utilized for 2021 Road Program. Staff request and recommend approving the IDOT resolution for the expenditure of $268,105 from the rebuild Illinois Bond Fund. Funding for this project was a budgeted item within the fiscal year 2021 budget.
Is there a motion to approve the rebuild Illinois Bonds Fund for the 2021 Road Program?
So moved.
So moved by, motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Fisher, echoed by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number seven C, improvement under Illinois Highway Code, rebuild Illinois Bond Funds for the 2022 Road Alley Program per Director Roberts.
Thank you again. For the purposes with record housekeeping, the attached resolution is required by IDOT for the utilization of the rebuild Illinois Bond Fund. These funds were utilized for the 2022 Road Program. Staff request and recommends approving the IDOT resolution for the expenditure of $536,304 from the rebuild Illinois Bond Fund. Funding for this project was a budgeted item within the fiscal year 2023 budget.
Is there a motion to approve the rebuild Illinois Bond Fund for the 2022 Road Alley Program?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number eight, consider passing ordinance as follows. 8A authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council and the City of Zion.
Excuse me?
You missed one.
I missed one. Thank you.
I know you're tired of listening.
I, you're right. Thank you. Item number 7D, improvement under Illinois Highway Code, rebuild Illinois Bonds Fund for the 2022 Road Alley Program per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. For the purposes with record housekeeping, the attached resolution is required by IDOT for the utilization from the motor fuel tax fund. The funds were utilized for the 2022 Road Program. Staff request and recommend approving the IDOT resolution for the expenditure of $380,64 from the motor fuel tax fund. Funding for this project was a budgeted item within the fiscal year 2023 budget.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Questions, comments? Just one question, since you're talking. I like hearing your voice so much, Director Roberts. These road funds come from 2020 through 2022. Can you explain to our residents that are here why that's the case?
These, all three of these projects were funded totally through the time that we fund. With Illinois brought out the rebuild Illinois Bond Fund, they provided the city with $1.6 million on top of our MFP fund. They originally slated this funding to be associated and spent just exactly the same as what we do our MFP fund. However, with the state's due diligence, they wanted to separate it and track it separately. So they wanted the resolutions and the councils to approve the usage of these funds separately. If the cities or municipalities that receive these RBI funds is tax for state funds, there was a little caveat there that if they were not spent by 2025, the state was going to take it back. I will happy, happy to say that relatively, the city of Zion spent all the funds for the road.
All right. My last question, since your voice is so soothing. Will you send me a lull, sing me a lullaby? All right. All right. Let's move on to item eight. Vote.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Now, we will move to item eight. Consider passing ordinance as follows. Item 8A, authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council and the City of Zion per Chief Barton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. I have completed a review of several areas in our CBA that clicked bargain agreement between the City of Zion and FOP Lodge Number 91, which is our local union here. Specifically, under the review, were Article 1 and 13 of this agreement. I have attached the MOU for your review and respectfully request approval as presented. Happy to answer your questions if you have.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Frierson. Any questions about the items that Chief Barton brought up? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number nine, discussion, authorization, and approval. 9A, consider zoning docket 23-Z-9, an ordinance requesting a special use permit to Section 10292, parentheses, A, parentheses, 5 of the Zion Municipal Code to blend, mix, and flavor vodka, located at 2501 Deborah Avenue, per Director Iason. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andrew Barra, Free King's vodka, LLC, seeking special use permit to Section 10292 35, Design Municipal Code, to blend, mix, and flavor vodka at the property located at 2501 Deborah Avenue. The purchase vodka, using proprietary methods, it will confuse and bottle flavored vodkas in sole full sale through distribution channels. The June 3, 2023, planning and zoning commission meeting, the director approves a special use permit.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the special use permit.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Frierson. Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number nine B, consider zoning docket 20 through 23Z-10, a resolution requesting a final plat of subdivision for PIN number 04-15-312-003 and 04-15-312-004 and PIN number 04-15-312-005 for property located at 1809 Sheridan Road, per Director Iason. Planning and zoning recommends approval.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hal Davis, seeking approval for a final plat of subdivision for last consolidation in PIN number 0415312003, 0415312004, 0415312005, the property located at 1809 Sheridan Road. Mr. Davis, requesting consolidation for future expansion of his alibi recovery. The June 3, 2023, planning and zoning commission meeting, the director approves a final subdivision consolidation.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Frierson? Thank you. Second by Commissioner Holmes. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Mr. Davis, good to see you. I thought you were bringing my car back this evening. Item number nine C, consider zoning docket 23-Z-11, an ordinance requesting a variance to Section 10-12, parentheses, A, to replace six-foot storm damaged fencing for property located at 3604 Harbor Ridge Drive, per Director Iason. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Diane Quinn is seeking a variance to Section 10-12A, Design Municipal Code, to replace six-foot storm damaged fencing installed in 1993. Since then, this code has been amended to only allow four-foot foots to fence as the new building might not corner lot. We recommend that you continue to put what it was, which is a hallway bag in front of the house, and the cupsets in the rear yard, and the sliding panes of the doors. The June 3, 2023, planning and zoning commission meeting, the director approves a very important request.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number nine D, consider zoning docket 23-Z-14, an ordinance requesting a variance from Section 102-12, 128, excuse me, parentheses, 6, parentheses, A, of Design Municipal Code to allow front off-street parking for property located at 2105 Elisha Avenue, per Director Iason. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, sir. One Hope United is seeking a variance to Section 102138, Design Municipal Code, to allow off-street, front off-street parking. Currently, to meet the necessary parking needs, they will need to continue to use the front off-street parking. The June 3, 2023, planning and zoning commission meeting, they recommend you approve the variance.
Is there a motion to approve the variance?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number nine E, consider zoning docket 23-Z-12, an ordinance requesting a variance from Section 102-126, parentheses, 1 of Design Municipal Code, to reduce minimum parking requirements for property located at 2105 Elisha Avenue, per Director Iason. Planning and zoning recommends approval.
Thank you, sir. One Hope United is seeking a variance to Section 1021, Design Municipal Code, to reduce minimum parking requirements. Currently, they would be required to buy twelve parking spaces and requesting to reduce to nine, five in the front and four in the rear. June 31, 2023, by the zoning commission meeting, the record to approve the variance.
Is there a motion to approve the variance?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Holmes, questions or comments?
Director Ianson, I guess just for clarity, so this variance is basically because of their use of the property. It's a multi-unit that they'll have office as well as residential quarters for the young men.
Is that correct? Thank you. All right, any additional questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor Kinnick?
Aye, motion carries five zip. Item number nine F, consider zoning docket 23-Z-13, an ordinance requesting a variance from section 102-132B of the Zion Municipal Code to reduce the minimum lot size and side yard setbacks from property located at 2105 Elisha Avenue, per Director Ianson. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, sir. One Hope United is seeking a variance to section 10232B of the Zion Municipal Code for current zoning district requirement. Building was building, making such use of building, including the apartment. We are requesting adjustment in general lot size and side yard setbacks. June 31, 2023, by the zoning commission meeting, the record to approve the variance.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor Kinnick?
Aye, motion carries five zip. Items number G and H, for those of you that have the agenda, have been tabled until a further meeting. So we move to item I, consider approval of plat of re-subdivision, per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Attention, the plat of re-subdivision for the Popeye property. The proposed plat provides an expanded right-of-way to accommodate the construction of Yale Court, connecting Sheridan Road and Colgate Avenue. Additionally, the plat is providing utility evenness for the new water main extension looping the city distribution system within this area. Staff is requesting recommending approval of the class of re-subdivision.
Is there a motion to approve the plat of re-subdivision?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Holmes and McDowell. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor Kinnick?
Aye, motion carries five zip. Item number nine J, consider approval budget for Capital Projects Fund Water and Water and Sewer Fund from May 1st, 2023 through April 30th, 2021, for, per Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. At prior meetings, we already approved the general fund budget, the Street and Bridge Fund, and our more fuel tax fund budgets. Primarily, obviously, our general fund covered the majority of our operations day-to-day. The street and bridge and the MFP funds were for going out to bid on the street projects. I hate to piecemeal the budgets like this, but now we have the Capital Projects Fund and the Water and Sewer Fund. Capital Projects Fund covers all of our equipment purchases that we need during the year and any large ticket facilities, improvements or renovations that we have planned. The Water and Sewer Fund, we need to get going because there's a million-dollar water project that we want to go out to bid for, so we need to approve budget for that to be able to get in that bid cycle. So, what you have before you, first, the Capital Projects Fund. You'll notice that last year, we did a $3.5 million transfer from the general fund into this fund. Two million of that was due to the stimulus, the relief funds due to COVID that we received that we were not able to transfer again over here. But we did budget a $1.5 million transfer from the general fund to cover our capital needs. The big change here is you also see in there that there's $1,992,697. That is where we're putting the funds from the SEGA grant, that's the state nuclear funds that we're using for capital expenditures and facilities improvements. We're trying to build a fund balance within this because we have significant needs for not only equipment, but our fire station two and our police department have millions of dollars of repairs and improvements that need to happen that we just can't justify spending that money in. So we're trying to save for, to look at new construction options for those. But we still do have needs for just general equipment to continue operations. So, the majority of what we have here listed in detail for the Capital Projects Fund is equipment that replacing, in many cases, 20-plus-year-old equipment that really only has a life of five to seven years. But we do a good job making things last a lot longer than they should out of necessity to our financial situation. But now we have the chance to kind of catch up with some of that with these SEGA funds. We have taken a lot of input from the community on how best to use these funds, and we'll be revealing more of our plans for that going forward. But the deadline for these funds is June 30th. We talked about possible tax abatements and things like that going forward as well. But our tax levy happens in December with the abatements at the beginning, early of next year. These funds are not going to be expended and received prior to that time. We're looking at 12 to 24 months out for receipt of these funds from the state, expenditure of these funds. So we'll really be looking at how to address those funds once these are actually acquired rather than in advance. But we'll get into more detail on that as we move forward in discussions. So, we're in the process now of applying for those funds. But even if those funds do not come through, the transfer of a million and a half plus the fund balance would be sufficient to purchase these. We planned on purchasing this equipment anyway in hopes that SEGA funds would come through, but we never want to rely on that for our operations. So, when the funds come through, it would supplement this and that one and a half million that we transferred would basically be savings towards those facilities improvements that I talked about. Any questions on any of the specific items that we have in the Capital Projects Fund? There's a lot listed there, but it's pretty straightforward on what we're purchasing. If there are none, the Water and Sewer Fund, very straightforward, very consistent with prior years. We will be talking about our water rate study at subsequent meetings to look at our water rates. We had that independent study probably three years ago now where they said they recommended how we step up and tier our rates over time. We delayed the implementation of that due to COVID, a lot of financial constraints on individuals. So we're actually almost two years behind on scaling up those rates. But this budget does not include any anticipated, any of those rate increases. We wanted to budget conservatively and go out to, for the water project conservatively. And any future changes in rates when we reflect on subsequent budgets, when those funds are received or actually in hand, we don't spend money before we get it. So, and any rate changes wouldn't be affected until January billings anyway. So we'd be through a majority of the fiscal year prior to that impact anyway. So we wanted to make sure we presented a conservative budget based on what we actually have right now in our financial condition. As I said, on the second page of the Water and Sewer Fund, towards the bottom, there's a million and a half dollars for water projects. About a million two for the actual water project, 166,000 for observation on that, and then 150,000 that we earmarked for the design to get a jump start on the subsequent year water project. So, if there aren't any questions on any of either of these budgets, I would recommend the approval of both of these funds, the budgets as presented.
All right, is there a motion to, for approval?
I'll make the motion to approve the Capital Projects Fund budget.
Second.
Second by McDowell, first, motion by Commissioner Fisher. And also the Water and Sewer Funds, too, need to be included in that. Commissioner Fisher?
The whole thing.
Yes. Okay. So we have a first, then we have a second, and we have any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor Kinnick?
Aye, motion carries five zip. Item number 10, departmental commentary. Director Ianson?
Thank you, sir. We still see, receiving daily phone calls, asking about 70% screw down in the building right now. So we're going to be patient and hopefully we'll figure out what we want. And then we'll start the cycle trying to keep up with the progress.
All right, thank you. Director Roberts?
Thanks, sir. We've been receiving lots of phone calls about potholes. We've been letting people know, please continue to follow, we will continue to make our list. However, right now, we are concentrating on our primary and secondary streets. We're scheduling that to be completed by mid or end of July. Then we will start looking at the alleys. So, if you see a patch truck out there and you skipped your alley, you didn't skip it. It's only working on the roads. We're receiving a lot of phone calls, we're in the area, why aren't we doing helps?
Okay. Chief Street?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I've been an innocent bystander tonight, it's been a very nice. Appreciate that.
Not so innocent.
Just a couple of quick things. First off, we hosted a blood drive last week, and it went pretty well. We could always hope for a better turnout next time. But by talent, account manager reported that the blood we received, much of it will go to City of Hope for their treatment. And up to 48 patients will be affected by that. So we appreciate those who did come out and support the blood drive, and we'll do it again. And we hope we can count on your support and more next time. The second thing is just another reminder, I've talked about it a couple of times in meetings, but certainly it's worth another reminder, since it's so dry, on being careful if you choose to have a campfire at your property. Of course, we've talked about just where the city ordinance doesn't allow for burning of yard waste, but campfires are okay, provided there are the ordinance of five feet in diameter or less. And we ask that it's 25 feet away from a structure or fence if possible. We know not everybody's yard is potentially big enough for that. We just ask you to use common sense and be as careful as possible, especially with this hot and dry as it is right now. So, thank you for your cooperation. Look at that, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Chief Street. Chief Barton?
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. Just a couple of things, wrapping up nostalgia days. Pretty good turnout for nostalgia days, lots of participants, good car show. Scoop the Loop or whatever we call it, I guess, the cruise. Was good, good turnout for that. Reminder that our fireworks coming up on June 29th, Park District is hosting. Well, just remind everybody that fireworks are illegal in our city unless it's a commercial show and they have proper permitting for. So please be safe with that and be safe on the roads during the holiday season.
I know we've talked about this, Chief, so that our people, our residents understand. A couple of years ago, we put in a fireworks ordinance during the pandemic. There were so many commercial-grade fireworks that it was disrupting residents, pets, everyone. So we put in an ordinance in which initially, the first couple of years, we would warn citizens that were using illegal fireworks in our town. We'd warn them, after the first warning, they'd get a $250 fine. Second warning, it was $500, and the third warning was $750. And so this year, because we've been, we've had that ordinance in place this year, we're just going to be fining residents that violate the ordinance.
And we have done so, and we've had some surprised looks, my understanding. When they get a $250 ticket when we get there. And we've even had people contest that ticket and ignore our citation and crank the music again, and we return an hour later and give them another ticket. But that one's a $500 ticket. So I think people are going to wake up and realize that the noise and the nuisance is just that to other neighbors, and it's fun to have a party, but just be respectful of your neighbors.
Yeah, not only the nuisance of the noise, but also the dangers Chief Street could speak to about the potential of fire damage. So when you're setting up illegal fireworks, you don't have control over it. And if it comes down on your neighbor's roof or your house, and it burns your house down, it does create some dangerous conditions. So we've been really working to cut down on that as a result of the noise, the disruptions to some of the veterans that might have PTSD, pets, and for residents that just want to have a quiet evening at home. Thank you for the clarification on that.
One point to add to that. So, Chief, is that also going to include motorcycles and cars that are constantly revving in alleys and garages?
Yeah, it would include that. That was part of when we, the ordinance that we wrote was pretty all-encompassing as far as just noise. It didn't matter what it was coming from. So if you do have, and there's hours of permissions within that, within the ordinance. But if you do have somebody that's causing disturbance, please let us know, and we'll go out there and instruct them appropriately.
All right. Our Director of Finance, Chris Conley?
Thank you. Our department's pretty boring, money comes in, money goes out. Nothing to report. We'll have the appropriation ordinance for you for the next meeting. About it?
All right, thank you. Administrator Naval?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to expand a little bit on the mention I had of the SEGA nuclear funds. Just so the public knows, all of the staff, as well as Mayor, from each of the taxing bodies, the superintendent, the park director, library director, myself, have been meeting pretty regularly together to try and work on how best to utilize these funds as a community. There's $14 million a year allocated from this SEGA grant to the Zion community that was specifically written into the law due to the closure of the nuclear power plant. So there's a lot of grants in there for other communities, but ours was specifically spelled out in there to go to the Zion taxing bodies to invest into the community, to get the best bank for the buck on addressing our challenges. So I just wanted the public to know that we're, you know, you always mentioned that we're working hard every day. We're not only working on the city, but we're working collaboratively with the other taxing bodies to try and address the challenges that we can't handle just on our own because every decision that we make impacts each other. So, we're coming to some conclusion on some movement with these funds, and probably relatively soon, you'll be seeing that group coming and presenting to each of the taxing bodies on kind of the plans that we have for these funds going forward, asking for support from the council on these initiatives and based on the feedback from the public on how we utilize these funds for infrastructure, for services, and with consideration of our property taxes. So that will be coming soon to a board meeting.
Yeah, and just want to reiterate something. This is something we've been working on for at least seven to eight, eight years today?
We're actually, it went on almost 11.
Almost 11 years, and part of this was the city council and our taxing bodies initially trying to get money from our federal government as part of the Nuclear Waste Act of 1982 in which they owe us money for being a storage facility for spent fuel rods. Because we've made little headway with the government, we've made some, but Congress keeps turning over. We need different votes. We're thinking outside the box. Administrator Naval doesn't get enough credit for thinking outside the box as ComEd was looking to get a bailout. We started talking to our state reps and our senators about ComEd getting a bailout with us being left holding the brunt of the damage that's been done to our community, and that's high taxes and spent fuel rods and the lack of use of our lakefront. And so some of our Lake County reps went to bat for us because we worked hard at extending and building those relationships and said, if ComEd gets a bailout, the City of Zion has to get a bailout. So this money that we're due will be extended to us over a 22-year period. So that really is so important for all of our taxing bodies and us to understand what we've worked so hard for, number one, to help our residents to lower their property taxes and be able to provide the quality services to our citizens throughout the community. And one of the things that, if we look back, this is, we've been the last two years where we've had a balanced budget, which for a 10 to 15-year period, that did not happen. It took a lot of work, a lot of fiscal responsibility, and a lot of discipline on our part by all of our department heads, so thank you for that. But it's setting us up for the future, and we will still continue. We're still continuing to work with the federal government to get with the federal government to get money from them as well. So thank you for all your work on that. Administrator Nabel, I tell you that on a pretty regular basis.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, I'd just like to say a few words about Esters Well. So the Zion Historical Society, in cooperation with the Zion Park District, have decided to restore Esters Well. Esters Well is one of the historical landmarks in the City of Zion, one of the very few that remain. This well was originally dedicated on July twelfth, nineteen oh two, just a few days after the city was incorporated. And it represented some of the, a well system that was part of the municipal water supply of the City of Zion. And this well has been in disrepair for decades. And if you just go a little bit west of Port Shiloh Pool, you'll see the basin of this well. And the restoration project is to turn this into a fountain and a garden. And we are having a groundbreaking for that tomorrow, June twenty-first at six P.M. And everyone is invited to come. Bring a shovel because we have a trench we have to dig. And you can, you can participate in that if you'd like, or symbolically participate by digging a shovel full of dirt at Esters Well.
No comments tonight about me being an historical landmark, Director Roberts?
Well, I understand.
I'm not feeling well tonight.
I understand that Mayor McKee will be there and will have a few remarks because he was at the, you were at the first one, weren't you?
Yes.
There it is.
Hamlet the Age Well. Commissioner Frierson?
No comments, sir.
Commissioner Holmes?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Fisher?
I just mentioned that I think everyone knows that July fourth is coming up and that would normally be a meeting date for us, but we're not having a meeting July fourth. So by the time we see you next month, everybody have a safe and happy Fourth of July.
And my comments tonight will be relatively brief. Just wanted to say one more thing about the fireworks. If someone is shooting off fireworks in your neighborhood and they are disrupting you and your family, call the police non-emergency number. And our police chief, we've talked about, will have, what's the term you use?
It's suppression detail?
Yes, suppression of noise detail. Instead of calling the emergency number, which a lot of people do, just call the main line. And we've been working at it for a couple of years to make sure that people are respectful of their neighbors. As Commissioner Fisher talked about, July fourth, city offices will be closed for the holiday. Everybody have a great Fourth of July. And also on the twenty-ninth, at the Park District, they will be having a concert in the park with Bella Kane, who was very popular. So please come out and support that. The last time we had Bella Kane in town, Fourth of July celebration. I've said this, and maybe I sound like a broken record, but it reminded me of the times when I grew up in Zion, when everybody was at the Park District enjoying the Fourth of July and the festivities. And it was peaceful and just everybody came out to have a great time. So Bella Kane will be in the house with the fireworks on June twenty-ninth instead of the Fourth of July. And people ask, why not on the Fourth of July? It's another reason taxing bodies have been trying to be fiscally responsible because the fireworks cost much more on that day than they do on the alternative days in which we've decided to have the Fourth of July fireworks in the last couple of days. Also, on July eighteenth, at six o'clock, there will be a Zion Township Board meeting. And July eighteenth at seven P.M., Zion City Council meeting. In closing, yesterday I was at an event for Juneteenth. And I, there were a couple of comments that were made by one of our senators, Adrian Johnson, who's just been a terrific senator in the state of Illinois. And she said something that reminds me so much of the people that I have the privilege and honor to work with every day. Our directors, our employees, our commissioners. We are doing this job not to be something, but to do something. And we are trying to make our community significantly better. And Pastor Eddie made these remarks that people that are engaged in their city see the world in our community as we want it to be. And that's a good, healthy, clean, safe community. So for all you people that come to city council meetings, we thank you for your engagement. Get your neighbors to come and we need people to help us. We can't do it all as a council and we can't do it all as our department heads. We need help from twenty-four thousand, six-hundred and fifty-five residents that we have here to continue to make our place, our city, the place we want it to be, a place that everybody wants to live, work, and play. So with that, item number twelve, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, good. Motion by Frierson to adjourn, second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you all for coming and drive safely.